Today is June 2nd, 2025 at this 6:35 PM. We'll begin our meeting as usual with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please show.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, our invocation is provided by Pastor Naylin McClellan from the North Charlestown Church of God. Pastor McClellan, it's old hat for you, but come on up, and you know the drill.
Okay. You all agree with us in prayer here tonight. But, God, we thank you tonight, Lord, for the opportunity to come here and pray above the city. Meeting here tonight, I just pray about your directions and guidance, wisdom and understanding. I pray for encouragement and strength to do whatever needs to be done to help the city grow for the right things. And we pray that justice and peace be on all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you.
God take care.
Sure.
Good to see you. Thank you for coming.
Let the record show tonight's meeting is being livestreamed by Underproduction Multimedia. We'll have a roll call. We have a couple of members that were trying to get on by Zoom, but if they're not able to join us, we will continue regardless. So, Bo Bertram?
Here.
Ronnie Blevins is currently not with us. Shannon Elder?
Here.
Brian Hester?
Here.
Chuck Deaton currently not with us, but we do have a form. An agenda has been provided. Entertained a motion to approve.
I mean, the meeting's been started.
Shannon Elder makes the motion.
Yeah, how do I get it on the screen?
Second by Brian Hester. Any edits or questions on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
I mean, it's on a window on the computer. How do I get it on the TV, right?
Lloyd, it's okay. We'll just progress. All right, agenda's been approved. Our standing business includes our prior meeting minutes from May 7th, 2025, our current claims and our payroll allowance docket from April 28th to May 25th. Entertained a motion to approve as provided.
No questions?
I have a motion by Shannon Elder. Was there a second?
Second.
Second by Bo Bertram. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. No one has signed up for public comments. It is summer, so our legislative youth advisor doesn't always make it in our summer meetings. We understand that. As far as the mayor's comments, I just want to make sure everybody is aware of the open house invitations at your site for showing off when we renovated Arts and Enrichment Center on Sunday, June 22nd from 3:30 to 5:30. I encourage you to come early and participate in our group trivia. It's really fun. It grows every year. We have more and more people that come and do the trivia, so it's really a good time. And all of our Founder's Week activities are posted on our Parks page, charlestownparks.com. You can click the link and it has everything lined up. And I believe they're going to run it in the News and Tribune tomorrow, so that we're getting that preview out. Mostly, I really want you guys to publish in your neighborhoods and hope your neighborhoods to do a float for the parade. So, the theme this year is Beautiful Day in the Neighborhood. The one and only Donna Kuma is going to be our official grand marshal as a thank you in celebration of her many years of service to the city of Charlestown. So, we'll put her right up front, center for everybody, but
Lord.
But, I am, we're hoping that people in their neighborhoods will get together, decorate their floats to represent their neighborhood and participate, so I kind of want to get that, get that out there. Are there any council comments at this time?
If you get a chance to go tomorrow night and watch Charlestown girls softball, they won their sectional for several years, and they get a chance to play in the region tomorrow, Franklin County.
Are they doing, you have a send-off for them or anything?
I haven't heard they made, but I haven't heard anything. It'll be 6 o'clock. It's about, almost two hours away, so.
We'll check WP and Q and see.
So, a good chance to see those girls are doing a great job. They play hard, they work hard. They deserve support.
Any other comments? All right. At this time, we did have a public hearing advertised for sewer capacity done. You confirmed with your staff nearby that that was advertised as appropriate through Charlestown, correct? All right. So, at this time, I will officially open the public hearing on the increase in sewer capacity fees. If there is anyone here to make remonstrance on these sewer capacity fees, this would be the time to speak. Since there is no one in the gallery but speaking, we will officially close the public hearing portion of this meeting for sewer capacity fees and move on through our agenda. First up, we have two items under old business. The first on our list is ordinance 2025 OR 9, the sewer capacity fees on its second reading. This passed on first reading at our last meeting. As a reminder, this is an increase only in new user capacity fees from 2,100 per EDU to 3,100 per use, because it was done after a study by Baker Tully found that we were within range of that.
Yes, sir.
With that, any motion to approve?
Counselor.
Motion by Brian Hester?
I'll second.
Second by Shannon Elder. Any other questions on this one, 2025 OR 9? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Passes on second reading. Next up, we have second reading of ordinance 2025 O R 8, amending the parks ordinance on its second reading. This is to allow for the use of alcoholic beverages during private rentals only of the Arts and Enrichment Center for events like weddings, utilizing a licensed bartender with adequate insurance for city coverage. Need a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion by Shannon Elder. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bo Bertram. Any questions on this one?
I do.
Okay.
In the ordinance, it says to sell alcohol?
Right. So, the reason being that sometimes people won't have an open bar at their event, so they might have a licensed bartender there, and the events, the people who are attending that event would still have to purchase that from that bartender. So, the city's not selling it, but the person who provides it might sell it to the events at that, to the people attending that private event.
Kind of like that was accurate.
You always do, and it's always welcome.
I rent it out. I sell alcohol, I have a big band, a big party, watching. I make money from that. Why don't I do that every weekend?
It's not the purpose of the Arts and Enrichment Center rental agreement. And I think that, I think that comes down to the rental agreement. We do have groups that use it, that make money off of it. So, for example, the critter convention that's coming as a, in conjunction with Founder's Day, they have small animal critters, reptiles, and whatever that they come and they show. They charge a ticket price. They are a nonprofit. They charge money for people to come in and do that. They make money off of that. And honestly, if they're paying our rental fees and they're respecting the property, as long as it's open, there's no restrictions.
That critter convention is probably going for a fundraiser for something instead of a person making money to make money. Okay. I just wanted to say that.
Tony Jackson is building a convention. He could probably provide some feedback on that.
Yeah, most part, they're scheduled out for the rest of the year, so that's highly unlikely.
Okay, so I can schedule it in 2027, every weekend?
No, hold on. I'll speak to that. We do not allow, that's one thing we do not allow. We do not allow long-term permanent rentals anymore. We've, we've done that in the past with churches, and we have found it to be extremely problematic because it ends up removing it from the people in the community that it's designed to serve. So, we actually only allow long-term rentals like that for events or people that are benefiting the entire community. So, for example, the senior citizens use it every Tuesday. We have a lease agreement with them where they're allowed to use it every single Tuesday.
Yeah, and that was accurate. I have a party every weekend. Why isn't that better than the community?
It's not open to everybody. This is for private events. We actually do not allow, we will not allow the alcohol for public events. It's for private events only.
And when I, when I was studying that door up, one of the things it talked about is when you have events where they have an open bar, you're more likely to have more trouble if you have a cash bar, and people are less likely to overdrink because of the cost. So, it's actually pretty good if it's a cash bar.
I promise you, there's people who go to cash bars. Hang in there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I know that, but I'm just saying.
Over the limit of what they should be.
For the most part.
I'm just saying, that's my devil's advocate here.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for answering my question.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So, that passes two to one. All right. Next up, moving into new business, there was a resolution 2025 R 8. This was sponsored by Councilman Ronnie Blevins, and he's unable to be here tonight. And so, out of respect for him, I'd actually ask for a motion to table that until he's here to introduce this resolution on his own.
No questions?
Motion to table by Shannon Elder.
Second.
Second by Brian Hester. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor of tabling, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's unanimous. And then the final item for business is a resolution that I am sponsoring, or an ordinance, sorry, that I am sponsoring. So, let me explain what this is. Since February, well, actually back before February, Chief Eric Cruz, who's here tonight, is answering any additional questions you might have, and I have been meeting with staff at the River Ridge Commerce Center to talk about a service agreement for police protection within the Commerce Center on our end. And you've obviously noticed the uptick in activity at the Commerce Center since they started building. So, in 2022, that's when the gate came down. Remember, that area, up until 2022, that area's been behind a private fence, a bar rider, privacy fence, and had some private security up until that point. And then between then and now, there really was nothing being built on it that needed additional police protection. So, we haven't asked for any support up until now. The CTDI that is open now currently employs 500 people in multiple shifts, almost 24/7. They have, they have a few shifts where they're not working. They deal with a very high-dollar, high-value product, and they have specifically indicated to me in a meeting, a need for business checks, police patrols regularly through their area of the Commerce Center. We have the Census Bureau that's under construction right now, and we'll hire 650 people coming online next summer. There was a recent sale to a speculated building that's being, sorry, they turned dirt on it. It will lease, I'm sure, very quickly based on this company's reputation. And then, of course, Cheesecake Factory will be breaking ground hopefully by August, and they want to come up with 200 people their first phase. So, we're looking at, when I did the numbers, it came to between 17 and 20% of our existing population on the north end of the plant within the next 12 to 24 months. So, a great significance. I've had Chief Cruz and his guys tracking our traffic flows, our license plate counts through the flock system, and I don't want to get these numbers wrong, Chief, but in January of 2024, we looked at the traffic reads for both our, both of, both of our cameras on 3 and 62, and they were around 169,000 reads. For April of 2025, so just a little over one year later, we looked at just the traffic reads for Highway 62 only, and it was over 200,000, just that camera.
In a month?
Yes. So, to say that things have started booming here would be an understatement. So far, we've not been able to successfully negotiate that service contract, but based on my conversations and meeting at CTDI and the understanding that they need this protection and we need to be able to provide that by providing an additional police officer for our community. I've looked into the Indian Code that allows the city, as a unit of government serving the Commerce Center, to adopt a pilot, paying in lieu of taxes, is what it stands for. This pilot allows us to capture the tax that we would receive only from those properties owned by the Commerce Center, not those administered, just as if we were to regularly receive it. So, I very looked into it. He drafted this ordinance for us. The reason that there is not a specific amount listed in this particular ordinance is because the amount will fluctuate every year. The amount every year is going to depend upon our tax rate, the valuation of the properties, so the assessed value of the properties in the Commerce Center that are owned by River Ridge on our end of the plant, and that they sell. So, as they sell them to private companies, those will come off. So, that's why there's not a hard, fast number attached to this. So, my request is that we pass this on first reading tonight, and that will allow me then to go to the River Ridge Board and meet with their attorney, Greg Pfeifer, and say, here's, here's the pilot, this is what we are doing. And I have a list of parcel numbers that I had obtained through the assessor's office. I need to get them to confirm that those are, in fact, the parcel numbers that are in the Charlestown City Limits portion of the River Ridge Commerce Center, that I haven't missed any, or that I haven't included something accidentally that's not. We tried to scrub them as best we could and pulled out like the 4-H Fairgrounds and those things, but we want to make sure we got an accurate list. As a part of this, they also have to report personal, any personal property, business personal property that they have, and so we will need them to report that to us as well. Am I missing anything, Perry?
No, I think that's, I think the statute's pretty straightforward. It was really simple to read. As the mayor stated, the pilots do not exceed the amount of property taxes that would have been levied by the fiscal body for the unit upon tampering with property described in subsection D if that property were not exempt from property taxation. So, basically, it's that rate that we have. And then, once we, if we pass this particular ordinance, set that rate, then the reuse authority has to provide us with that values of those properties so we can then ask that it be paid. And so, pretty straightforward. I, I kind of, when I'm talking about it, trying to figure out what, what the responses would be from statutory standpoint. I don't really see anything at this particular point. No case law on it. There's very few, there's only a couple of military bases out there, and this is probably the most active in the state, so.
And in the statute, did you see anything that listed a remonstrance process for, for the Commerce Center?
It did not. And, and basically, the statute has the legislative findings of why they believe this should be available to the municipality or the unit which we qualify as. So, no, I didn't see any type of remonstrance provision whatsoever.
So, when the reuse authority was created, the statute that was used to create that reuse authority acknowledged that when a reuse authority is created within a unit of government, that unit of government is going to have the burden of providing of governmental services like police protection to that unit. This has not been an issue for the city of Charlestown ever since we annexed the plant in 1960 because it's always been, it's always had its own private security. In fact, the ordinance that annexed it in 1960 acknowledged that, and it says, at some point, or not right now, but at some point, the city will have to provide these government services, and so we are annexing it because of that. That annexation has stood through trials and tribulations. It's been challenged legally by the county as well as by the city of Jeffersonville, and it has stood the test of those challenges. In fact, the U.S. Army gave a, a letter confirming that the annexation was done properly back in 2020, in 2002 when it was challenged. So, everybody around here knows that ammunition plant has always been Charlestown, and now that fence is down and the businesses are coming in, we have to provide protection. It's no different than me than if some of these, you know, we're building these, we're not building, but they're building these apartments, and they're building single-family homes, and as those homes come online, we've kept pace with that by hiring additional officers. Since 2020, we've hired two additional officers, taking us from 16 to 18, to keep up with that growth. Well, the growth that's coming in the ammunition plant is happening monumentally fast, and I don't want us to get behind. For me, policing is infrastructure. We're laying roads, we're laying sewer lines, we're laying water lines. We have to provide for the public safety as well. So, I believe enacting this pilot is the way that we can stay ahead and keep up our public safety and make sure that our residents are not suffering because our police are responding to calls within the Commerce Center, but also that the businesses coming to the Commerce Center have adequate protection. With that, we can probably put it on the table, and I'm just giving you other questions there are, but I need a motion to advance it.
No questions?
Motion by Shannon Elder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian Hester. Happy to answer any questions.
What is the tool to enforce payment? Is it, I mean, who, does the state government, does the county government, who, who polices that, that payment?
Perry, I will turn to attorneys for that.
Well, it looks like it says, it's in the ordinance, or in the statute, says that pilots shall be deposited in general fundable. Pilots shall be set, due and set forth in the ordinance and bear interest if unpaid, as in the case of other tax on property, pilots should be treated in the same manner as property tax purposes of all procedural and substantive law. And so, it's a collection action that would occur, so.
From who?
From us.
From the city, because it is our ordinance, and it's what's due to us, or to the city, not us, but the city itself. So, there's an enforcement mechanism that's set forth in, in this particular, like any property taxes, if you.
If you don't pay the property taxes, we put a lien on your house and take you to court.
Right, okay. So, there is an enforcement mechanism.
Okay. Second. That was accurate.
That's a good question. I mean, what do you, any payment, what do you know?
My next one's that. Um, you, we have been partnership with River Ridge, and, and it seems like we try to work with them as much as possible. If we're forcing them to pay this now, how does that, is that hurt our relationship?
That's a question I can't answer. I don't know why I would. It's allowed by state law. It's.
Plus, I will say this, that in, in the statute again, it indicates that the reuse authority may consider these payments to be operating expenses for all purposes.
I'm not saying that we don't deserve them.
No, I'm just saying that they can, they can, it has benefit to them because they can use that as an operating expense.
Right.
If they're having to pay that amount. Does that?
That makes sense.
Yeah. It, it may pee them off that, you know, you're doing this to us, because I think of the dialogue that's been going on back and forth at this point where the resistance is there, but I mean, I think this is a good way to open the door and say, what are you, what are you offering? If not, this is what we're going to do.
Yeah, no, I agree that it needs to happen. I'm not, just for the record, where does the city limits go to?
The city limits goes with Paul Garrett.
Paul Garrett, okay.
Down to the mouth of the 14 Mile Creek, all the way to the river.
And what, what do you all patrol?
All of that.
All of that?
Yep.
So, that, that is, that is the city limits, though.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the city limits?
So, even though it's a property owned by the state park, the area, it's really kind of strange the way it's done. Even though it's a property owned by the state park and DNR down at the boat dock, it's actually within the city's jurisdiction. So, for instance, our police officers, when they get a call down at the boat dock, they have to go all the way through because the rest of the park is county jurisdiction, so we have to go all the way through. But, we're not, this does not affect the state park at all because it's not a property any question. It's just the River Ridge Commerce owned properties.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, I could explain a little bit more of that because, so, the portion we're talking about, you know, State Park borders the river all along behind River Ridge too. So, we go straight back from 62 all the way to the river to Paul Garrett, and then borders, there goes all the way to the 14 Mile Creek. So, previous to last eight months, we've never had to patrol it because, like you said, it's been behind a gate, and the 60s, 70s, 80s, it's had its own police protection and stuff, and stuff, so we've never had to operate back there, but now we do, especially with the business coming online. CTDI, they've had the, their portion in Jeff as long, as well as the Charlestown portion, so already had robberies of upwards of millions of dollars worth of products, and we just, that's kind of their reasoning for this, as well as preparing for the future growth, so.
I think it's needed, I'm not, I'm not even in this need, I'm just trying to cover the bases here.
And, you know, to be clear, you know, I fully acknowledge and put out that I sit in a place where I am not only a member of that, of River Ridge Board, but also the mayor of Charlestown, I carry that dual role by appointment, but this benefits both.
Absolutely.
And I, and I was saying, and I will say that over and over and over, it benefits both. We have a duty to answer calls within that Commerce Center right now. If there was a 911 call right now at CTDI, we would be in there. I mean, we're going to provide service to that. I just want to make sure as we grow that River Ridge is protected, and as a board member, that's critical to me, making sure that River Ridge has that protection, especially when we're talking about companies that have such high-end products like CTDI and others that may come in there, or sensitive, you know, confidential, you know, material like the Census Bureau, we need to be providing protection for them, not just in active responses to 911, but in regular business checks. We are about preventing crime in Charlestown, and we cannot do that with only 18 police officers. We, to provide, if our population within the city residential area was growing by 17% within 12 to 24 months, we could absolutely capture that tax increase, or not increase, but revenue from those new homes and new construction, and we would hire another police officer. We have a history of doing that by the two we've hired since 2020. This is no different, except that with it being wrapped up in a perpetual TIF through redevelopment over there, we get no tax revenue from them. They are authorized to enter service agreements with municipalities, and in this situation, in lieu of waiting for them to reach the conclusion that it's time for that, we can use what the state has already given us to enact this pilot payment, so that we can stay ahead of our needs and not get behind in meeting their needs.
I'm for it. I'm, I, you know, I just want to make sure we cover everything.
Have there been any other municipalities that's S or the S?
So, the only other municipality that is affected by this directly is the city of Jeffersonville, and they successfully negotiated a service contract in January of 2023 at the board's public meeting, January 2023. The board's attorney, Greg Pfeifer, mentioned in that meeting to the board that it was time to begin negotiating service contracts with the city of Jeffersonville and the city of Charlestown to provide for police protection. You see, it's the city's responsibility to set the speed limits within the Commerce Center. They're used as public roads, but Commerce Center themselves, they don't set those speed limits, the cities do. And he, he initiated that conversation because of that need. Now, since the Jeffersonville portion of the Commerce Center was more fully developed at that time, and because they had not negotiated something like that, they asked to do Jeffersonville first. They got that done. We seem to have stalled out on getting the Charlestown side completed through a traditional service agreement. And when I realized that the pilot was an option, and I understand the need that we have here and how we develop very differently than the city of Jeffersonville, they have 92. They have 92 police officers. We have 18. Only 12 of those are regular patrol officers because two of them are SROs and some of the others are admin or detectives. So it's a very different, very different development process, especially when you consider that Charlestown's economy has always been tied to that land. When the plant closed, our local economy declined as much as it boomed when it first came on. And now that it's booming again, our economy and growth is actually happening again too. And what I don't want to see is the mistakes of the past repeated. Because in 1940, when that plant came online, we had one police officer, and it feels like we've been playing catch-up in every form of infrastructure since then. With the help of the River Ridge Development Authority, we've gotten ahead on our wastewater needs. That's obviously critical infrastructure. We've worked with NDOT and county on making some road improvements. We're doing our own drainage improvements. We are staying ahead of infrastructure in every way. This is also critical infrastructure, and I think that it's best to stay ahead of it rather than get behind and constantly going trying to play catch-up. So yes, there is precedent. I mean, like I said, in the state, the, when the very state code that created the reuse authority explicitly acknowledges the burden that local units of government will face when it's created, there's no stronger argument for me that it's time for this to happen because the creators of it themselves acknowledge that there would be a need for it at some time. And we are here. We've reached that point. So, okay, so this is so that we can hire another police officer? Yes. Which we all know will fully back our police department. The money's going into general fund? Yes. Are they paid out of our general fund? Okay. I wasn't sure. I just wanted to make sure. Almost all of our policies. So our general fund, what was the percentage I had? Just over half. Would you ever ran the numbers for me? Our general fund goes for public safety. Okay. So I just want to make sure the money will be there when I. It didn't be appropriated as a part of the budget when we were, you know, we will know after tonight, if it passes, I will, again, like I said, I'll go to them and I'll say, hey, this is coming. We will figure out what that payment would be for next year. I'll have that number so that when I present it a second reading next month, I can give that to you. Then, like I said, every year it will change depending on what's sold, what our rate is, what their property value's at, because their property goes up in value, just like everybody else's does. It's assessed, it has to be assessed every year. The statute makes that clear, that the assessor has to assess those properties as if they were paying taxes. So there is an assessed value attached to every single one of those properties.
So there is a contract with Jeffersonville.
Yep. There is a service contract. It's not a pilot. Now, the contract with Jeffersonville is not a pilot. It's just a service contract.
I guess we were denied.
Yes. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. I'll bring that back at second reading with some additional information at our next meeting. All right. With that, I have no other items unless the attorneys have anything for us or Donna has anything other than needing signatures.
No, that's all I have. Thank you.
So we just need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Motion by Shannon Elder.
Second.
You gotta let us go home.
I'll second.
Bo Bertram makes the same. I'm like, I'm stuck here, Bo.
Bo's already out the door.
I was gonna run the rest.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Yeah, I'm saving it for the second reading. A real kudos goes to your staff and helping